No complaints.
Hey, Councilman Maury. We going to the classroom?
I'm literally reading this email today. I wasn't expecting it.
All about your body towers.
But yeah, honestly.
I just know what's a problem.
Three hours is a long time to me. So I'm gonna try to go.
I was thinking an hour, I'll give you two.
He been here. He did the first right thing, he did the first right thing that came here, he's always been here.
Wow, we should have recognized him.
Good morning. We'll now call this council meeting to order. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
My apologies.
No problem.
And I gotta find out, I don't know if that's right. That's wrong.
It's ten oh one.
Mister Mayor, I'm ready.
Ready? We'll now call this council meeting to order. We ask that if you have a cellphone, if you'd be so kind at this time to put it on silent, mute, or off, it'd be greatly appreciated. We'll be led in prayer by a madam clerk, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Madam clerk.
O God almighty, wisdom and justice through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, um, if you plan on speaking or addressing, uh, council, please make sure you sign in at the sign-in, uh, desk, at the sign-in sheet here to my left at the podium. Madam clerk.
Councilors Williams?
Yeah.
Maureen?
Present.
Roots?
Present.
Mayor Kirkland?
Present. Move for the approval of minutes?
So moved.
Madam clerk.
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. This time, we open the microphone up for public comment on agenda items only. If you have, uh, comment on the agenda items only, we ask that you would state your name, your address, and your comments.
Good morning, Councilwoman Mary Adelaide Evans, four six five Bradley Street, Chester, Pennsylvania. Um, I would like to speak to the public com- I would like to speak on the agenda items of the expenditure list. I would first like to say, um, who approves the bills? And have these bills already been paid? Um, why does it seem like we're paying for sponsorships instead of getting, um, maybe, uh, wh- well, why are we paying for sponsorships, let me just say that? And why are we operating like we're not a distressed municipality?
Yeah, sure, so your first question was who approves the bills? Uh, the receiver approves the bills? And Chief Leonard Lightner approves the bills currently right now. Um, and you said, why are we paying for sponsorships?
Uh huh.
Um.
At the top of the expenditure list, it says something of a, uh, speaks to the nature of something of a sponsorship.
So you have the expenditure list in front of you?
And it says something like a thousand dollars or something?
So you have the expenditure list in front of you?
Uh huh.
Okay. So I'm not necessarily sure how you may have gotten the expenditure list, but I don't see.
It's online for public record.
Um. You say a sponsorship?
It says sponsorship sponsor for arts, one thousand dollars.
Oh, so first of all, anytime typically when we play for an event or a sponsorship, it normally doesn't come out of, uh, uh, the general fund unless we plan and budget that throughout the year. Uh, this is actual grant. So we have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar PCCD grant, which is a state grant. It's actually our second grant that we've had since twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. Um, so when you see PCCD and violence prevention, the AMACHI, that's our AMACHI program, it's a grant. So this isn't, uh, general fund money, uh, this is state-funded, uh, grant, uh, monies to, uh, for violence prevention in the community.
So shouldn't that be listed on another list instead of the expenditure list? Cause it looks like we're, it looks like we're paying for that.
Yeah, so what happens is we pay out a general fund and it's a reimbursable grant. So after we expense the, uh, uh, the project or the, uh, event or, uh, expenditures, then we send those reports to, uh, the state and that's how we get reimbursed for the money that we, uh, expensed out prior to, uh, us getting back the drawdown.
Is that the same for the Easter Bunny and also the Easter Wonderland?
Yes, if you see they all say PCCD, Violence Prevention AMACHI, they're all the same.
Okay, um. Who, um, who makes the final determination when these bills are paid?
When, you said when they're paid or how?
You said who makes the final decision as to when these bills are paid or how they get paid?
Um, I would say it's a team of individuals that reviews the bills. Um, and right now, Chief Lightner, prior to that, uh, it was myself and the finance team, um, where we would sit down and discuss what bills that we're able to pay.
Can you guys also speak to the, um, the tree removal that was done on the one hundred block of Hay Street? We paid out twenty three hundred dollars?
Um, what, what, what would you like to know about it?
Like, can you explain? Like, was that our property, did, did it become our fault, that's why we had to pay, like? Cause I'm, I'm only speaking to these things because of the fact that I pay taxes and I also pay that three point seven five wage tax. So this is part of my money that's being spent out, so I would like to know where it's going.
So I can't speak to why we removed the tree, looking at, thinking of one thirty-two Hay Street, I'm not sure if that, the tree was sitting on our property or not, so I can't really speak to that.
Excuse me, Mister Robertson, can you come up here to the mic, cause the microphone, the, I'm sorry, the tape might not pick you up? Thank you.
Rodney Robertson, City of Chester, uh, Public Works. So the tree on the one hundred block of Hay Street, um, several years back, the tree there damaged the homeowners. So we weren't able to take care back then, cause we didn't have the funding for it, do our tree contractor. So when we finally got a tree contractor under our, our purview, our, you know, so we went out there and removed the tree that damaged someone's house right there. As you can see, the corner houses damaged real bad and it's from the trees that were there. Alright?
And my last thing is, um, when it comes to the bankruptcy, there's a lot of different, um, itemized bills on there when it comes to the bankruptcy. Is that from us fighting the bankruptcy or us just representing ourselves?
That's a question.
I said there are several itemized, uh, I guess, things on the expenditure list that reference the bankruptcy. Are we, are those bills from us fighting the bankruptcy or are those bills for us representing ourselves in the bankruptcy?
They are as a result of the filing of the bankruptcy. And they are for councils hired by the deceased.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Um, so I have some stuff about the expenditure list as well, so.
Excuse me, you have to state your name and.
Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry, thank you, I'm Haley Gerena, my address is three fourteen East Twenty Fourth Street. Um, I noticed on the expenditure list that we are paying some vendors outside of Chester for services that could be fulfilled by businesses in Chester. Um, for example, we paid Mono's Auto and Brumall Truck and Auto when there are auto body shops that could benefit from those opportunities here. I think the city could do a better job at seeking local businesses to service the city and keep the funds within our community as opposed to, I don't think Brumall needs our money and I don't think Smoffmore needs our money, quite frankly. Um, to a similar tune, I think we need to, uh, just do better outreach and, and improve our outreach to qualified Chester residents when there's a job opening in, in City Hall, it's kind of off of last meeting. Um, but while there are plenty of qualified and skilled people in Chester, not many of them are necessarily currently unemployed, nor chomping at the bits to apply for a position within bankrupted city government. Um, so I'm, I'm curious to that point, if there are any applicants from Chester for the open CFO position and how we can, as a city, and how City Hall can do a better job recruiting qualified Chester residents for open positions? And lastly, PCCD is the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, correct?
I, you're talking.
Too fast.
I think, no, you're going beyond the agenda items.
Okay, can I go back to the PCCD? I'm just asking for clarification, cause that's on the expenditure list?
We want you to stick to the agenda items, if you wanna make a public comment at the.
End.
End.
Perfect, thank you for the clarification. So, PCCD, correct, that we're paying those for the Easter Bunny and that kind of stuff, or that's the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'm just curious if the, the Easter Bunny is costing eighteen hundred dollars? That's quite expensive for one thing. Um, I would think that in the city of Chester, especially when we're talking about crime and delinquency, we have other, fun, that funding could go towards anything else really, other than an eighteen hundred dollar Easter Bunny, unless he's laying gold eggs for the residents, I don't think that that's necessarily appropriate. Um, so that's my comment on that agenda.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, how are you?
Good morning.
Tamika Gibson, sixteen oh three Concord Avenue. I have a question, uh, in regards to the expenditure list. Um, I need, I would like to know, what is the master service agreement? And, uh, why is it fifty-six thousand dollars? I'd like to know, um, also why are the taxpayers paying for a sexual assault investigation? And the vehicle maintenance, um, which cars are they being paid for? Because it just lists, it, it, it doesn't say for vehicles that, um, are being serviced.
Sure, so your first question was about the master service agreement. So, we have a, uh, Protivity is a, a team of individuals in a finance and, well, now it's just finance department that is assisting to try to bring the city of Chester current on its orders. Uh, and helping in some other areas as well, some particular projects as well. So, uh, the bills range roughly about fifty plus thousand a month. What I will say, since May, I believe since May of twenty twenty-two, was when the Protivity team first came in here. And from May to December of twenty twenty-two, I think we paid them roughly about seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, from January to current, we might have paid another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's running closer to a million dollars. Um, so to answer your question, that's why we're paying them, they're very high, very costly. And in my opinion, I'm not, I don't think that we're getting the, the proper service that we deserve, we're paying this amount of money.
So the fifty-six thousand, is that every week or is that every month?
Monthly, so it's not for one individual, it's for roughly about four to five individuals. Uh, but their hourly rates are fairly high, um, and yes, for a few, so it's monthly.
Monthly, oh, thank you.
Um, your next question was about vehicles, and I'll piggyback to the last individual. First of all, what, to repair our police vehicles and the, the, the mechanics have to be certified to repair any, uh, police and or fire vehicles. And not a lot of mechanics in the city of Chester are certified to work on those vehicles. Um, additionally, I believe in, I believe Brumalls is, is in Chester, Brumalls is a Chester vendor. Um, and I know Mano's once was, but, uh, to add on as well as to the other question, what vehicles are be- are being repaired? If you see, looking at it, it says twenty-four thirty-three or twenty-four sixty-one, those are actual vehicle, police vehicle numbers. So that's, it's not the license plate number, but that's that, that's how we detail as far as what vehicle is being repaired.
Okay, thank you. And so the last question is the sexual assault investigations. Why, why are we responsible for paying for somebody's sexual assault investigation?
See, I would say, legal, but I also don't see that.
I mean, that would be a personal matter.
It's, it's a personal matter, but the taxpayers are.
Subject matter which cannot be discussed.
So, so we just pay training?
Oh, this is training.
Was that straight?
Yeah, this is training.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, good morning, Anita Littleton. Um, I just had a, a question about a couple of the items here. What, what exactly is the redevelopment agreement for the nineteen hundred, uh, nineteen hundred to nineteen ten West Second Street? Also, can you speak of which road, uh, approval to issue a road opening permit for PICO? Uh, what, what road is that, just trying to get some information on this? And also, if you can explain what item number eleven is as well?
So.
So number, I'm, I'm, uh, four, ten, and eleven. Just can you explain what is entailed with the approval for those items?
So, so number four, wh- what are you, are you asking what's been, what's been developed?
Yeah, what, what is that, you guys are approving the redevelopment agreement for, uh, the nineteen hundred to nineteen ten West Second Street? What, yeah, what is, exactly is that, that you are approving?
Is that Cedar? The resolution says a takeout restaurant.
A takeout restaurant? Would, okay, is that, so like an individual business who's starting a, a restaurant there and it's called the takeout restaurant?
That's what it appears to be under the resolution.
On the resolution.
Okay. So when you guys are approving these, I mean, cause I'm not, just kinda noticed that it took a minute to answer that question. Is this something that, you know, is this something that is discussed beforehand, you know? I just kinda wonder why it took so long to answer that question?
Yes, these matters go before planning, zoning, our code enforcement looks at it. It's discussed typically at a deliberative meeting or executive session.
So you guys, you guys discussed it at the previous deliberative meeting or?
Lisa Gaffney, on behalf of Cedar, typically presents this to us, yes.
Okay. So again, could you respond to why it took so long to just answer what this was?
We do a, we do an awful lot of work here. Um, we do a number of resolutions. Excuse me? Excuse me? Yes.
You don't really have to answer that, Mayor, I'm just wanted to, you know, cause I just responded to what the, sort of just said.
Question about a budget item, I didn't have the resolution in front of me. Once my council, my fellow council member here pointed out the resolution, I was able to answer it and recall the process that we went through to approve that, to answer your question.
Okay, so just a further clarification, so when you guys are coming to these public council meetings to approve these things, I'm assuming that they've been clearly, it, it's like that, that process happens right before this meeting, so it should kinda be fresh in your minds, or is this like a two-week process after this process?
This has been in the works for some time, so.
Okay.
Discussions over a long period of time.
Okay, alright, so, okay, so eleven, ten, and eleven, if you will.
On ten, uh, uh, so that's what PICO there, Mike.
So the, the city has an ordinance, any mains that are installed over three hundred feet require a resolution. PICO is proposing a project on two ninety-one. The work for that project is gonna come down to ninety-one, I believe from Ridley, and then it's gonna go up Hinkson Street and Sixth Street over by where Harris Casino is. Um, the exact location should be on the resolution.
And what did this work about?
Uh, it's, uh, I believe it's a gas main project.
A gas main project?
Gas or electric, I, I don't have the exact, it's electric, okay, it's electric project.
Okay, so what is it, how does it like?
So what happens is, what, what they do is they submit their application, I review it, I send it up to get a resolution, then they come back and they apply for the road opening permit. At that time, we may have additional comments or questions, depending on what comments or questions come out of council.
So is this something that is related to a city issue or something that they want independent of the city?
It, it's just upgrading their electric lines, uh, throughout the city and their gas mains, yeah, it's pretty, uh, standard process we do.
Okay, uh, so is that gonna require like for that road to be shut down, anything that needs?
We require that the roadways remain open, if they do have to shut them down, uh, they'll have to submit a traffic control plan for that. There is work on two ninety-one, which would require a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT. So PennDOT would coordinate that with us, and also they coordinate with the fire department.
Okay, so they will be responsible for the safety of the residents in Chester City, people that are.
They're, they're contractors and, and yes, they're all, they're responsible for that.
Mike, I think you probably need to look at number eleven as well.
PennDOT East on your, um, is that, is, I'd have to see the resolution in front of me, I don't recall submitting that one up.
Early grant.
Oh, oh, I apologize, yeah, so we did, we received the Arley grant for Jeffrey Street and two ninety-one. Uh, we talked about that at a previous meeting. This just allows us to enter the agreement for that project, so that's where we got about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to upgrade that traffic signal. You might have heard that at a previous meeting, we also, I think the mayor's gonna announce, we received additional funding, uh, along two ninety-one. Uh, in, in the terms, you know, I don't wanna steal your fire, Mayor, but.
Don't steal it.
Uh, well, yeah, we actually, the city, city applied for additional grants, uh, along two ninety-one, working with Chester Economic Development Authority, and the city received about one point two million dollars for additional improvements on two ninety-one.
Okay.
So that'll be in addition to the Arley grant.
Okay, so this Jeffrey Street, so what's supposed to happen there, what is this hundred and twenty thousand dollars going to go for?
That's a traffic sig- we wanna get a traffic signal there, because that's, right now, it's a blinking light. And we have a lot of accidents there, we also get sight, have sight distance issues, by getting a traffic signal there, we, we intend to make the roadway safer.
Wow, that costs a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, a lot of money.
Oh, yeah. Traffic signal, yeah, traffic signal work does, it, it gets quite expensive, cause of materials and the labor, specialized labor.
So it's kinda like we, a traffic signal that we would see normally in the city somewhere?
Yes, a full, yeah, a, a upgrade to that signal to make it a full traffic signal.
So traffic signals, that's the.
It would be, yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a flashing light, it would actually be an actual signal, and that's, that's actually not a, not a high price. Uh, considering, if it was a brand new signal from scratch, you would be looking at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, I didn't know that, yeah, okay, wow, those things are expensive. Alright, thank you so much, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mike. Madam clerk.
Resolution, whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Michael Bell, six oh five Central Avenue, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. And number two, Danielle Tillery, twelve thirty-one Pine Lane, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. Whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined, the aforementioned individuals have met all of the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the six hundred block of Central Avenue and in the twelve hundred block of Pine Lane in the city of Chester.
So moved. Any questions? Madam clerk.
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the city of Chester hired Stephanie Moy as the Human Resources Director effective December fifth, twenty twenty-two, and due to staffing limitations, Ms. Moy had to complete another assignment within the Department of Accounts and Finance. And whereas the city would like to amend Resolution one eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two to read as follows. Whereas the city of Chester hired Stephanie Moy as the full-time Human Resources Director, Department of Accounts, Finance, and Human Resources, effective February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, for thirty-seven point five hours per week with no benefits and a sixty-day probationary period. And whereas said employment is contingent upon said individual successfully completing a sixty-day probation from the date of hire. And whereas the city is required by law to offer said employee medical benefits after sixty consecutive days of employment, which is completed on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. And now therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve, further, if said employee fails to meet the job expectations within the sixty-day probation, said employee will no longer be eligible for the position and will be subject to termination from said position.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam clerk.
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the city of Chester hired Judy Richards for the full-time Deputy Director of Inspectors, Licenses, and Inspections effective March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, for thirty-seven point five hours per week with no benefits and a sixty-day probationary period. And whereas said employment is contingent upon said individual successfully completing a sixty-day probation from the date of hire. And whereas the city is required by law to offer said employee medical benefits after sixty days of employment, which is completed on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. And now therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve, further, if said employee fails to meet the job expectations within the sixty-day probation, said employee will no longer be eligible for the position and will be subject to termination from said position.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? I do, uh, just wanna make a comment statement. I met with Ms. Richards, um, earlier this week. And I sat down with her, we did not move Ms. Richards, uh, at our previous council meeting because no one, uh, from council had sat through an interview with Ms. Richards. I made it a point to meet with Ms. Richards, to have a discussion with Ms., Ms. Richards, to see and hear about her qualifications. I do believe that we have persons here who can and will do the job. Ms. Richards has a contract with the city, we're gonna honor that contract, and she has sixty days to prove her worth. And so I'm going to ask that council would support this move. I know it was said in some documents that the mayor and members of council did not move on this, and we did not move on this at the last meeting, as I stated. No one, no one, nobody, no one from this body sat down with Ms. Richards and interviewed her. No one. And so it's hard to have a person come on board that you have not met or talked to or interviewed. Madam clerk. I'm sorry. I did make the motion, but just wanted for clarity, I think you did say, but last week, this, last council meeting, this resolution, or a resolution that was proposed to hire, uh, Ms. Richards was, was tabled. Uh, so this would be the first time that the, or the second time that members of council, mayor and council are considering, uh, a resolution of this kind. Do you have any?
Question.
You have a question?
I, I do, because it's saying that we hired her on that date. If it was tabled or motioned or whatever, she was never hired. So are we not making a, a resolution for this time to hire her? I just wanna make sure I'm reading it, but it's saying that we hired her effective, we never hired her. So I just wanna make sure the wording is correct?
She was offered, she was sent an offer letter, I believe, Mister, Mister Lightner, could you?
So she was sent an offer letter for March twenty-third. Uh, so this resolution is correcting that offer to March twenty-seventh.
So she's never, she's not hot, she's offered, she's offered the position. But now that it's at the resolution, the actual hire date will be March twenty seventh.
Okay, I'm just saying, cause I'm just knowing, even though I wasn't here at the last meeting, I keep up with everything, I just know it was tabled. And then for me to say that it was, she was hired. I guess I'm a little confused, but that's not for me to say, I was just questioning what I'm reading to understand it. I just, how are you hired before council, mayor and council agreed to hire someone? Even though the offer letter went out, so that's just me questioning it, which I probably could have asked it another time, so thank you, Mister.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure that my wording was correct for the resolution and understanding what's going on, thank you.
Call the rule, miss.
Counselors Williams? Morgan?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas Holding Brothers LLC wishes to purchase and redevelop certain real property. Located at nineteen hundred through nineteen ten West Second Street to develop a takeout restaurant. And whereas the Board of the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Chester has approved the redevelopment authority. Entering into a redevelopment agreement conditioned upon approval of the agreement by the Chester City Council. And whereas the subject properties at nineteen hundred through nineteen ten West Second Street. Are located in a redevelopment area in the city of Chester. And as such, the sale, lease or transfer of such property is subject to approval. By Chester City Council under the Urban Redevelopment Law at thirty five. P S, section seventeen oh nine K. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve. That it does hereby approve the redevelopment agreement between the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Chester. And Holding Brothers LLC for the purchase of certain real property. At nineteen hundred through nineteen ten West Second Street for the development of a takeout restaurant.
So move. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas Diego Nieves Melicio Junior. And Dorothy Jackson wished to purchase and redevelop certain real property. Located at seven twenty two McAvane Street as a side yard. And whereas the Board of the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Chester has approved. The Redevelopment Authority entering into an agreement of sale with Mister Melicio Junior and Ms. Jackson. Condition upon approval of the agreement by the Chester City Council. And whereas the property is located in a redevelopment area in the city of Chester. And as such, the sale, lease or transfer of such property is subject to approval. By Chester City Council under the Urban Redevelopment Law at thirty five. P S, section seventeen oh nine K. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve. That it hereby approve the agreement of sale between the Redevelopment Authority. Of the City of Chester and Diego Nieves Melicio Junior and Dorothy Jackson. For the development of a side yard at the certain real property located at seven twenty two McAvane Street.
So move. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas under Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act. Of nineteen seventy four, as amended, the Secretary of the U S Department of Housing. And Urban Development is authorized to extend financial assistance to communities in the prevention. And elimination of slums for urban blight. Carry out activities which will benefit low and moderate income persons. Or address other urgent community development needs. And whereas under the Home Program created by the National Affordable Housing Act of nineteen ninety as amended. The Secretary of HUD is authorized to extend financial assistance. To participating jurisdictions to expand the supply of decent, safe. Sanitary and affordable housing. And whereas the City of Chester has been notified that the fiscal year twenty twenty three Community Development Block Grant. Known as the C D B G program allocation will be one million. Two hundred sixty one thousand, two hundred eleven dollars. And its Home Investment Partnerships Program known as Home allocation will be four hundred and seven. Thousand, one hundred forty six dollars. And whereas the City of Chester intends to reprogram prior year C D B G funds. In the amount of one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that are currently unprogrammed. And twenty five thousand dollars for the Penn Home Healthcare Foundation public service activity that did not move forward. And whereas the City of Chester in collaboration with the Chester Economic Development Authority has prepared. A draft annual action plan for fiscal year twenty twenty three. Which proposes how the entitlement grant funds will be expended to address the housing and community development needs. Identified in the city's five-year consolidated plan. And whereas a draft of the fiscal year twenty twenty three Annual Action Plan was on public display. From February first, twenty twenty three through March third, twenty twenty three. And the city held a series of public meetings and hearings on the said plan and the comments of various agencies. Groups and residents were taken into consideration in the preparation of the final document. And now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, section one. That the Annual Action Plan for the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Three, C D B G and Home Programs. Is hereby in all respects approved and the city clerk is hereby directed. To file a copy of said Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Three. With the official minutes of this meeting of this council. Section two, that the City Council of the City of Chester is cognizant of the conditions that are imposed. In the undertaking and carrying out of the Community Development Block Grant Program. And the Home Investment Partnerships Program with federal financial assistance under Title One. Including those related to, number one, the relocation of site occupants. Number two, the prohibition of discrimination because of race, color, age, religion. Sex, disability, familial status or national organ, and number three. Other assurances as set forth under the certifications. Section three, that the mayor of the City of Chester on behalf of city council is authorized to file an application. For financial assistance with the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. For the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Three, C D B G Program and Home Program. And section four, that the mayor on behalf of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania is authorized to provide assurances. And or certifications as required by the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy four. As amended and any other supplemental or revised data. Which the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development may request and review of the city's application.
So move. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas Congress approved the American Rescue Plan Act. Of twenty twenty one and appropriated American Rescue Plan known as ARP. Funds to be administered through the Department of Housing and Urban Development's Home Investment Partnerships Program. And whereas home dash ARP funds are to be used to perform the following four activities. For qualifying individuals and families who are homeless, at risk of homelessness. Or in other vulnerable populations. Development in support of affordable housing. Tenant-based rental assistance known as T B R A. Provision of supportive services and acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter units. And whereas the Department of Housing and Urban Development has allocated a total of one million. Three hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty two dollars in home dash ARP funds to the City of Chester. And whereas the city has prepared a proposed home dash ARP allocation plan. In accordance with HUD home dash ARP allocation plan requirements. And whereas the City of Chester has met the requirements for the public comment period and public hearing. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, section one. The amendment to the City of Chester's Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty One Annual Action Plan. To add one million, three hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty two dollars in home. Dash ARP funding is hereby approved to be utilized pursuant to the city's proposed. Home dash ARP allocation plan. And section two, the proposed use of home dash ARP funding as set forth in the proposed home. Dash ARP allocation plan is as follows. Development of affordable housing. Nine hundred eighty nine thousand, eighty seven dollars. Supportive services, one hundred thirty one thousand, eight hundred and seventy eight dollars. Nonprofit operating, sixty five thousand, nine hundred thirty nine dollars. In the administration and planning, one hundred thirty one thousand, eight hundred and seventy eight dollars. Totalling one million, three hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty two dollars.
So move. Are there any questions?
No questions, just a comment, um, the last resolution, uh, prior to this one, I was just read about the F Y twenty twenty three Annual Action Plan. For C D B G, um, many of our local organizations, um, businesses and, um. Our Chodo here, C C I P, uh, oftentimes are recipients of that. And those monies are are funds that go directly into our community to help our community, to rebuild our community. Um, and again, many of our nonprofit organizations are recipients of that on an annual basis. Uh, the resolution that madam, uh. Clerk, there we go, just, uh, read, um, is an additional funding for the federal government, uh, the Department of. Um, Housing and Urban Development is additional American Rescue Plan funds. Uh, that has come down, uh, as mentioned, one point three million, uh, we had a meeting roughly about two weeks ago. Uh, public hearing, um, with, uh, C E D A. Um, and if you, the public have any questions, comments, concerns, need some additional clarity. Uh, on this type of, uh, the the funding and and how we intend to use the funds, uh, please reach out to C E D A. Uh, the email address, address is J A R at C E D A dot C C. We have not, uh, chosen how we're going to use the. Uh, supportive services and the nonprofit operating and or development of affordable housing, however. We potentially do have a, a housing. Not a housing project, but a project for affordable housing that we're looking to use, uh, roughly about. Uh, a good amount of the the portions of the money here, uh, for the art funds and matching it up with some other funding that we have, uh, with the, uh. The home funds for C D B G, so, uh, I'm saying all of this to say, uh, there's a lot of of resources that's. Additionally, that's coming down to the City of Chester, and we intend to use it to continue to build up our residents in our city as well, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the City of Chester, known as the city, requires the services of a firm. That provides management of information, technology and or systems. Which is known as the I T or I S support services. And will provide a complete I T infrastructure assessment within the first thirty days of award. And whereas the city issued a request for proposal, which is known as a R F P. Twenty twenty three dash zero one for I T and or I S management. Through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Program known as Co-Stars. And whereas, as a Co-Stars member, the city has met all the requirements of the Commonwealth Procurement Code. And whereas the proposals were due back on February twentieth, twenty twenty three. And the scoring committee met to review the three proposals that were reviewed, excuse me, that were received. And found no discrepancies with the proposals. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve. That it does hereby award the contract for R F P twenty twenty three dash zero one. For I T and or I S management to wait technology. As the lowest, most qualified and responsible bidder for a total price of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Annually for three years. Further, said bidder submitted an initial I T infrastructure assessment price of fifty thousand dollars. Which shall be paid with American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one ARPA funds. Further, all other proposals for the above services are hereby rejected. Further, the proper city official shall provide a copy of the contract to be reviewed by the solicitor's office. And a successful bidder shall furnish a performance bond in the full amount of the contract. In accordance with the R F P and to the satisfaction of city council.
With this resolution, um, I'm gonna ask mayor and council if we can table this resolution. For additional dis- for discussion with mayor and council and, uh, C, well, as for chief Lightner. Uh, so I will make a motion to table this, uh, resolution.
My second.
There's been motion and second to table this resolution. Madam Clerk, you wanna take a vote?
I'm gonna call the rule.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the City of Chester has commenced a public improvement project. For the reconstruction of the Lloyd Street Bridge known as the project. And whereas it has been to, been determined, in order for the project to move forward. The city will have to enter a temporary easement for construction agreement. For the real property located at ten twenty nine West Fifth, West Fifth Street owned by Penn Street Apartments L P. And whereas this will allow for the entry and re-entry of city employees, agents and contractors. To do any and all work necessary for the completion of the project. And whereas the city agrees to restore the area covered by the easement to a condition consistent. With the balance of the property. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve. That it does hereby authorize the mayor to execute the temporary easement for construction agreement. For the real property located at ten twenty nine West Fifth Street owned by Penn Street Apartments L P. Permitting access to the property for the reconstruction of the Lloyd Street Bridge Project. Further, it does authorize payment of the final settlement for this project. By the Department of Accounts and Finance in an amount not to exceed three thousand, eight hundred dollars.
So move. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve. That it does hereby grant permission and authorize the issuance of a road opening permit to Pico. For the installation of six hundred and ninety feet of new electrical lines within the city of Chester. As the fa- at the following locations. Number one, P A State Route two ninety one from Ridley Creek to Hinkson Street. Number two, Hinkson Street from P A State Route two ninety one to East Sixth Street. And number three, East Seventh Street from East Sixth Street to Caldwell Street. Further, said permit is contingent upon Pico's compliance with all the conditions outlined. By the city engineer and perform in a manner that is satisfactory to city council. Specifically, the following, the following. Number one, Pico performs a half mill and overlay on all road openings exceeding one hundred feet. Or three patches within one hundred feet. Number two, Pico provides. Number two, PICO provides appropriate traffic control measures to ensure continual operation of city streets. Number three, PICO obtains all required road opening permits from the city as well as any other required permits. And number four, PICO obtained a PINDOT highway occupancy permit.
So move. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas Chester City Council approved the submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, known as PINDOT, for an early grant for the construction and installation of a new automated traffic signal at the intersection of P A State Route two ninety-one and Jeffrey Street. And whereas all grant documents must be signed through Commonwealth's electronic signature portal. Now therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve Michael Galante, city engineer, to electronically sign all documents necessary for completion of the PINDOT early grant application for traffic signal improvements.
So move. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas a property review policy, known as policy, has been developed to outline the steps necessary to sell or rent vacant or surplus city-owned real estate for fair market value. And whereas the policy requires the creation of a property review committee, known as the committee, will, which will consist of one chairperson and five regular members who will make recommendations to the mayor, council and chief of staff regarding the disposition of vacant or surplus city real estate, which has been determined by the committee to be non-essential to providing current or future public services to the citizens of the city. And whereas the committee shall meet on an as-needed basis and shall periodically review a list of city-owned real estate to determine the visibility of selling or leasing vacant city-owned real estate. And whereas the committee shall address requests from elected officials, department directors, city staff, interested citizens and organizations that maintain valid interest concerning matters related to city-owned real estate. And whereas the committee shall summarize its recommendations, which will include the method of disposition for each property and shall prepare a final report containing the committee's recommendations, director's comments and supporting documentation to be reviewed by the mayor and chief of staff and then forwarded to council for consideration. Now therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the property review policy and does not, excuse me, and does appoint the following individuals to the property review committee. Chairperson would be the director of planning for a designate, director of public works for a designate, the superintendent of parks and or recreation coordinator, building code official for a designate, the assistant city solicitor and the engineer.
So move. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that the receiver has authorized a proper city official to prepare specifications for the advertisement for request for proposals, known as R F P, for temporary parking management services and development of comprehensive parking plan for the entire city of Chester. Further, that it does authorize a designated city official to advertise for the aforementioned R F P in consultation with the receiver.
So move. Are there any questions? Not a question, but a comment, statement. We did not support or move on the R F P, this same R F P that was bought before council at the last council meeting simply because it did not include the entire city of Chester. This one does. So, uh, when you read or hear about those who say that we did something wrong by not moving that, that's not correct. The bottom line now is the entire city is now a part of this resolution. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize a proper city official to prepare the specifications for the advertisement for the following bid, street light maintenance. Further, that it does hereby authorize the city clerk to advertise for the aforementioned bid.
So move. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list dated March tenth, twenty twenty-three, attached hereto and made apart here, uh, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So move. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Roots?
No.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna jump out of order a little bit here, um, before we do the COVID update and the Amachi pu- uh, program update. I wanna, um, call our streets guys here. And I wanna recognize them for the awesome, awesome job they have done, uh, in obtaining their CDL licenses. And, yeah. They've been, they've been working very closely with Mr. Eric Bane, uh, workforce development director. And he's been pushing these guys and he's been promising me that these guys are doing excellent. He's promised me that these guys are gonna get across the finish line and they did. And so we wanna, we wanna recognize them today. We don't do it enough with our very own. And we wanna do it today because our, um, our men and women are extremely talented. And once given the challenge, they, they exceed, they exceed, they go far and beyond the challenge. Um, so we wanna recognize these three gentlemen, and there'll be more coming right behind them because they are the examples today. Um, Mr. Sean Drawn? Mr. Brian Sellers? Come on, man. Mr. Kenny Jones? And no good team, th- they don't go anywhere without a good coach. Mr. Eric Bane, come on, stand up. We're, we're extremely proud of you guys. You make, you make Chester proud. Um, we knew, we knew that you were gonna do it and, uh, doing what you did and obtain those licenses will encourage so many more. So on behalf of myself and council, we wanna thank you guys for a job well done.
I wanna follow that up with just one other comment. For those of you who don't know what a C D L is, is a commercial driver's license that allows these guys to drive the big stuff. I, uh, obtained a C D L years ago and I know how difficult the process is. You've gotta put in some time driving trucks. It's, it's a similar process to get your regular driver's license times ten. Uh, so I, I just wanna congratulate you guys for going through that process because I know it's not easy. And on the backend, you have like tougher, uh, uh, restrictions on what you can do. For instance, if you get pulled over for, God forbid, a DUI, the level of alcohol is significantly lower that has to be in your system. So there's a lot of responsibilities that come with driving these big vehicles. I will say though, that everybody should go through the process because it definitely gives you a better understanding of traffic rules uh, than you do on your standard, uh, driver's license. So if anybody has an opportunity to at least see what the test looks like, you'll appreciate what these guys have just gone through and I congratulate you again.
Thank you, fellas. Job well done. Y'all go back to work, man. Miss, uh, King, or what's that, Miss King?
Good morning.
Good morning.
In March, the Pennsylvania Department of Health has reported twelve positive cases of COVID in Chester. Research experts believe that the number of positive cases may be undercounted given the common use of at-home tests and residents who may have mild symptoms that do not get tested. The CDC states that people in Delaware County may choose to mask at any time due to the low level of COVID transmission. You can go to vaccines.gov for the most up-to-date appointment availability for vaccines and boosters. We encourage everyone to consider getting the vaccine and booster shot if you haven't already. The health department is partnering with Woodland Pharmacy and the Black Equity Coalition to sponsor a vaccine booster flu and shingle shot clinic today, March twenty-second, from eleven to one, in the city hall computer room downstairs. We will also have another clinic on Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, from eleven to one at the Access Community Center on seven oh-one Booth Street. And we have flyers for that clinic up here on the podium. City Hall also offers free blood pressure screenings every Wednesday from eleven to one P M in the lobby. Finally, we wanted to give a special thanks to everyone who attended our Women's Health Conference on March eleventh. We hope to see you all next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss King. And, uh, a shout out to both Miss King and Miss Rosetta Carter. It was an excellent, uh, conference, um, Patty Jackson was there, a number of other speakers were there. Um, we were there and it was, it was a very informative and well-attended. So it was a great shout out to Miss Carter and her staff.
Mayor and councilman, you can speak. Matt, on your side, get your.
Um, Mr. Daniels? Should I, should I say Mr. Amachi?
First, I'd like to thank, uh, God first and foremost for giving me the opportunity to do this work in our community. Uh, second, mayor and council for the unwavering support that Amachi asks and demands a lot. And I just wanna really, uh, thank the mayor for allowing this to thrive and, and grow under his administration. Uh, Councilman Morgan for doing all the, the heavy lifting that it takes to get these resources out in the community. Uh, Councilman Roots for showing up and, and you for all your enthusiasm and support, uh, for, for all our events. Really appreciate you. Uh, next, just like to thank the community, uh, for giving us the opportunity to, uh, connect and to engage, um, and let the program grow. Uh, Amachi is a, uh, is, is our, is one of our cures to, uh, violence in the city of Chester. It provides safe recreation for children from ages seven to fifteen. I, I would say even more than that, uh, outside those lines because the basic goal is to provide, um, children impacted by gun violence or incarceration, um, access or avenue to experience different things. Um, to date, uh, we've been, we've been everywhere. We, we've been to the book, the museum in D C, the Black Museum. We just recently came off of, uh, a Battle of the Bands tour, which included, uh, us traveling to Alabama State, uh, Virginia State, uh, a Morehouse and being toured and having, uh, and, and seeing the actual Battle of the Bands and connecting with, uh, the brothers of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated on those various campus, campuses. Um, we're also very proud of our, our, uh, athletic, our athletic rendition of Chester. Uh, we just put out this video that's going around to the, uh, public school district and all school districts or everybody who wanna watch, which includes the history of Chester, Chester-centric, um, athletics. And, you know, some study guides and we just, we just take that on the road and we deliver it to, uh, everybody who willing to listen. Um, pop-up live berries, uh, skating, bowling, uh, coat drives, food drives, turkey drives, toys for tots, uh, pictures of Santa. And, and, and on April first, we'll be downstairs, um, giving children an opportunity to take a picture with the Easter Bunny. Um, it's a robust effort. It's happening here, uh, on the first and then followed by the eighth. We definitely support it. The Easter egg comes this happening at, uh, Sun Village, uh, Chester Park and Memorial Park. Um, Amachi is means and nature. Who knows what would guide this father's through this child? It's a, uh, it's a, it's an evidence-based model that we spread around the city of Chester. When you are evidence-based, it give you the opportunity to get access to different types of funds, whether state, local or federal. And we just travel around the city, uh, to different people who would like to and, and we, and we get them certified to be Amachi mentors. And when they get certified, they get, they get the opportunity for us to, um, just give them resources so they could do the dope stuff that they doing in the community already. On the paper is a list of community organizations, uh, and, and, and also a list of the activities that we have just done over the last two quarters since October. But what I'm most proud of, it's front and back too, that's a lot of activities. What I'm most proud of is the fact that, uh, I was able to work with Councilman Morgan and recruit like eighty-five thousand dollars in funds, um, uh, from Pennsylvania Council of Crime and Delinquency. And we're spreading those funds throughout the city. Uh, we like to call it our gift to giving campaign. Um, and if you could see some of the names that's mentioned on the bottom of it. Probably know some of the groups or your kids are probably part of the groups or you, you seen them in the community. But it includes dazzling royals, who always dance at every function, uh, purpose performers, another group, another dance group, camp encouragement, um, who provide grief, grief sharing, grief, grief, grief therapy for our children impacted by gun violence. Uh, painting freedom located in the cat center that which provide, uh, arts and craft and, and free activities, um. The cat center with terror, terror Felicia with the Harambe, a six-week program, the kids who go through. Everybody eats, um, this, we sponsor that for, uh, for our cooking sessions that we got going on for our kids to have cooking classes. And then it's the rundown, Upland Hurricanes, Chester Cheetahs, Chester Panthers, Chester Biddy, Chester Boys and Girls Club. All of these people are getting funds to, just, just to make sure they could continue to do what they do in our community. Uh, also, the Chester Boys and Girls Club, uh, for always giving us access to their space and, um, who sponsors our tennis program. Um, that, it, it was a, it was a huge lift to sponsor that tennis program. But now it's in place, it's in all the after-school programs and, and it's just really, it's really, it's really a good situation. The Uplift Foundation, which is the brothers of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, is a nonprofit arm. Uh, we do a lot of stuff through that and partner with those brothers to make sure we can keep this work going. Um, oh, and I forgot, the Chester Township Cougars also. Uh, so these are just some of the things that's going on with Amachi. If you ever wanted to get access to Amachi. If you ever wanted to get access to Amachi, you could always just look on a Google it. You know, it's it's Google. It has a Google presence. It'll take you right to um City Hall website where it lives. If you want to be a part of the mentoring program, just click on the mentor. If you have children that want to be part of the mentee program, just click on I Want to be a Mentee. And I've and then it has all our contact information uh for you to be able to uh start a conversation about how we can help our youth in our community. And all these all these relationships started from just simple conversations and um they grew and they continue to grow. Um so again, I just wanted to present this to Mayor and the Council and the community and give opportunity to fill questions. Bring awareness to what Amachi is doing in the community and uh and thank you.
Ironically, there I don't know if Mr. Jamar Danes was here earlier in the meeting, but there were some questions regarding the expenditure list and the Amachi. Um so I think those things were answered were answered and I hope that it was most certainly answered with what you provided for. So really, Jamar uh and team, I thank you. We all thank you, I'm sure, but thank you for the work that you've been able to do, all the projects and programs you've been able to put uh throughout the community, day in and day out, week after week. Um he mentioned about uh some work that we work a lot, but uh most recently, we were working with the state to uh open a grant back up so that we can exhaust fully all of the money that we had within an older PCCD grant. So the city, so the state ended up working, no, the state ended up working with us. Uh we were able to open up the grant to give roughly an additional eighty-five thousand dollars so that we can push out to the community, to the organizations here in the city of Chester. So so that's kudos to Jamar staying on the phone, late nights, early mornings with that department. Um and you may have you may have heard him say uh some organizations that you might say that might not be directly here in the community uh in the city of Chester, but they're still our babies. Our babies play for Upland, our babies run for Chester Cheetahs, our our babies play for Chester Township Cougars, um the cheerleaders as well. So they're they're all our youth. Uh we're just trying to be able to provide for them and provide them with the the proper, the necessary exposure so that they can take it to the next step. So thank you and thank you again. Jamar is, Mr. Daniels is not a bragger or someone that tries to do a lot of flashy stuff in in the public. He's just someone that does a lot of hard work. And I I requested that he come and do a presentation because, you know, you do good stuff with Amachi, excellent stuff with Amachi and with our young people. And I think people need to know that. They need to know that the your work ethic, they need to know the time and effort you put into working with our 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 youth as well as our our older adults. So we just want to say thank you, man, and and just continue to keep up the hard, great work. Appreciate you.
I I just have to add, you got a heck of a staff as well. I mean, we're looking at you, but man, you've got a team that gets it done.
Thank you, sir. Before we go, it's one other. I'm gonna say Diamond in the Rock. Mr. Lamont Collins. Could you stand, please? Mr. Collins has passed his residential building inspector exam. And he is now an international code code counsel expert. Oh, he's from Chester. One of our very own. Thank you, sir, for for the hard work that you put in and we look forward to bigger and better things coming from you in this department. Thank you again. Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you, Your Honor and Council, uh for allowing me to make a statement and good morning, everyone. I rarely make statements, but I feel compelled to make a statement today. After hearing the Municipal Financial Recovery Advisory Committee hearing last week, I need to set the record straight. The subject matter of council fees came up when the mayor was asked, the mayor asked why his outside counsel was not paid to handle matters on behalf of the city. And the mayor was asked why his solicitor couldn't handle that. Well, let me explain why. First of all, there are specialized legal matters in the city that the solicitor never handles and has never handled for at least the past forty years that I'm aware of, dating back through the former solicitor, Mary Toll, Judge Linda Cardozo, and Judge Zatuski. Specialized legal matters are always referred to outside counsel, much in the same manner as we have bankruptcy counsel, labor counsel, tax assessment counsel, and counsel for real estate matters and other specialized contracts. Should I have, could I have handled the case in Commonwealth Court? And obviated the necessity of hiring outside counsel who has not been paid, who for some reason, there's a refusal to pay our outside counsel. So should I have handled it, handled it, or could I have handled it? Number one, I think I could have handled it. I've handled several Commonwealth Court cases in my day. However, I think I could have handled it if I had the two former full-time assistant solicitors that I had for ten years before the advent of COVID. Right now, the Solicitor's Office is manned exclusively by myself and Janelle Brown, my paralegal. Thank God for Janelle. So had I had two other assistant counsel, I think I could have handled it and probably saved the city some money, even though our outside counsel has not been paid. The firm we were up against had eighteen lawyers and had at least three or four of them participating in the hearing. So that's what we were up against. That's the kind of law firm you need to handle a specialized matter in Commonwealth Court. Now, I think it's important to understand what I've done since two thousand and twelve, what my role is, what my responsibilities are as solicitor under the Home Rule Charter, the Administrative Code, and the Third Class City Code. So my role is essentially and has been formerly for ten years with the assistance of two other assistant solicitors and two other paralegals. The preparation of agendas, the attendance at deliberative and council meetings like today, special council meetings, executive sessions, monthly, weekly, whenever required, twenty-four seven. Consultation as needed on a timely basis with all elected officials, everyone sitting on this bench next to me. And I think they can attest to that, twenty-four seven. The mayor, council, often the police chief, the fire commissioner, um licenses and inspections, and any department head that needs help by cell phone, by mail, in person, whatever they need. Immediate response is critical to the city. These resolutions are not, these these agendas are not cookie cutter. They don't come out of a book. We have to draft them. We have to review projects. We have to see why the resolution is being asked. What laws need to be reviewed, what contracts need to be reviewed. It takes a considerable amount of time. There's a lot of moving parts in the city of Chester with all of the real estate, all of the employees, all of the labor issues, all of the tax issues. There's a casino, um there's the Gaming Commission, there's a professional soccer team. There's multiple grants, multiple projects, tons of moving parts. It's a lot of work. We handle all legal matters that involve any interpretation of our Home Rule Charter, our Administrative Code, the Pennsylvania Third Class City Code, the Sunshine Act, the Right to Know Law. There are three or four Right to Know requests a week, if not sometimes a day in the city of Chester that require all hands on deck. The Ethics Act, Act forty-seven. Any other municipal or state law. Now, we even have to oversee a little bit of bankruptcy. Thank God we have very good bankruptcy counsel. We also prepare and review contracts. We work with the budgeting process. We have to make sure that there's proper and competitive bidding. We have to look at grants. We initially look at all labor matters, all personnel matters, and decide what needs to be ferreted out and farmed out to Labor Counsel. Zoning, we often oversee that subdivision, land development, code enforcement, public bidding, the Stormwater Authority, the Water Authority, law enforcement, traffic, parking. We also oversee all litigation against the city, and I think it's no secret that the city gets sued daily, if not weekly. All state and federal litigation, whether it's a liability claim, whether it's a civil rights claim, whether it's a workers' compensation claim. We have to open the file. We have to help with the investigation through the various departments. We have to interface with the insurance adjusters and the insurance carriers, and we have several insurance carriers. We then have to assign um outside insurance defense counsel to handle those matters. Each pleading we have to review. We often interface with them. We attend court hearings. We attend pre-trial conferences. We attend mediations. We attend arbitrations along with our outside counsel. This is an inordinate amount of work and takes an inordinate amount of time. But our job also is to recommend recommend outside counsel, as I said, whether it's labor counsel, real estate counsel, tax assessment counsel. We have a bankruptcy attorney as well, the city, as well as the receiver has a bankruptcy attorney. That all takes a lot of time. So I want to say that for the past twelve years, it's been an absolute pleasure to do this. It still is. It's a lot more work, but I enjoy it very much and um I'll continue to do it. But I want to make it clear that nobody shirked their responsibility and sent that Commonwealth Court case or any any other case to outside counsel because they didn't do want to do any work. Okay, I really want to make that clear. That's why the solicitor didn't handle it. In addition to one other really big reason, which I think everyone understands, you can't be a witness and an attorney in a case. And in that case, I was a primary witness. So I just want to set the record straight because I could not participate in that Municipal Financial Recovery Advisory Hearing. A lot of people listened to it. A lot of the public listens to it and I listened to it and I I really feel compelled to set the record straight today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Solicitor. And thank you, thank you um and for all your hard work.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Appreciate it.
I think I can add on to that. I think a couple council meetings ago, we had a resolution. We're looking at getting an assistant solicitor and it just bodes to to what he said. There is a lot of work that gets done in this department. And fortunately or unfortunately, in order to get a lot of the work done, we do have to spend money with other councils. So as long as, you know, we're set up in this type of an arrangement when we have just a single solicitor and just a single assistant and or paralegal. And hopefully, an assistant solicitor, that's just going to have to be the case, but hopefully not the case forever. Because uh there's a ton of work that goes through your office and I appreciate.
Thank you, Councilman.
That you're you're always there to answer the call when I'm there. You respond to calls. I don't know how you do it with the workload that you have. And that's a sincere statement on your behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson. Ms. Haley. Ms. Daniel.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um my name is Diana. I'm I'm here to get a follow-up on the parking problem that I had spoke with you the last week. It has gotten worse. And to be out there arguing with somebody, it's I don't have the right, but here's some pictures I have. In that block because of the business. The person owns the house but don't live there. And the residence, it's not right to the residence. And that's just just some of the pictures.
So those that's in front of your home?
Yes. And the handicap parking zone. That's just, they don't even pay any mind. Even sound to like Friday, the one with you can't see no tag. That was Friday and I had called, but I was so upset, you know.
So there's a handicap parking zone in front of your house and people are parking in it that don't have handicap.
Going to the business and but they're, you know, going to the business and that's six days a week from nine, ten o'clock in the morning to five, six o'clock in the evening. Sometimes I have to park down the street, wait till I see a spot, move up car back up in front of the door so I could take my bags out the car.
Two things, two things we're working on. We have um I met with um Mr. Riker in um zoning. He's aware of it and he is investigating the situation also. Uh Councilman Wes isn't here because she had, I think it was shoulder surgery.
I had spoken with her too.
Yeah, and she is looking into the possibility of uh extra signage on that that says we're trying to see if we can obtain that resident resident only uh to ensure that you're able to park in front of your home. So we haven't, we have not given up. It's a it's a process that we have to go through. To try to see if we can.
But also not leaves the residence of that block. You know, that's a residential neighborhood, that block.
The prob- the problem is, and I don't mean to cut you off, but the problem is, um and I, Mr. Riker isn't here, but I think the problem is it's been there for, I'm sorry. What's the address again?
Thirty fifteen West Nine Street. Thirty fifteen West Nine.
How how long has that business been there?
It's been there for a while and I've been complaining for some years. I was here during the time when the woman from Nova Vista was complaining about the parking and that was going on. I was here then speaking on that. And it's, I mean, it's an ongoing thing, even though the um handicap parking zone wasn't there. Now that's there. They uh don't even pay them out and some of them don't even have a plaque. And they just see that spot. And also, it'd be space, parking space in front of the woman that has the business there, just parking space in front of her truck a couple times. And they just see that, they just zoom right in on that spot and park there whether they handicap or or not and it's.
The com- com.
I did go out and I did take a picture. It's on January twenty-fourth and the address is three zero one three. And uh it's a financial service. I I told her, I've been down there, some of my patrol officers are trying to address the issue, but I'm working someone else who actually knows the person and trying to have a little meeting to uh rectify the situation.
And I have the pictures.
And then you're in.
Yeah. And I have the pictures.
I got you.
So we 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 haven't kicked it to the curb. We're work, we're work, we're actively working on.
Okay, so this has been going on, like I said, for some years now and it's ridiculous.
Ms. Sevens.
Good morning again, everyone.
Morning.
So I just have a few things and then I'll state everything that I need to say and then you guys can answer because I know I have that three minutes. Um I love the signs on Ninth Street from Couso to Chester High, um the school speeding zone, but they're not being enforced. Um the school um zone on Providence is also not being enforced. And I also would like to know who's responsible for the crossing guards because not all of the schools have one and I'm sure there's a shortage, but I just wanted to know who to contact and reference to that. Also, between Fourth and Seventh Street on Flower, um truckers have created a truck stop. I addressed this before, but nothing has happened. You guys were saying that signs could possibly be put up to, well, to tell them that they shouldn't be parking there, but nothing is happening. So when you come down Sixth Street, either you look to the left or to the right. It's very hard to see. So you can almost get into an accident coming out of that intersection because the trucks have made a truck stop. There's even vehicles that have been there since last year. They left them, come back, go off. They left them, come back, go off to where they need to go, and come back to those vehicles. I also would like to know, since you guys spoke on the interview process, what is that process? Just so the public is aware as to the interview process for a new employee coming to City Hall.
Let me start off by saying, the school zone signs, you say, not being enforced. Unfortunately, we do not have enough officers to be everywhere at the same time. It's unfortunate. So we try to hope, or we hope that our residents and those outside of the city would adhere to the laws. Unfortunately, they don't always. If our officers in the area, or if someone identifies a person going around a school bus or driving too fast in the area, if they're willing to just get their license plate number, it gives us a help as law enforcement and as council. So we're asking, we always need community help when it comes to that.
Myself personally, almost I ran off the road on Ninth Street. I was doing a 15 mile an hour school zone. There was a car, there was three cars behind me, she or he spun up and did eighty down Ninth Street. And, you know, I understand that we have a shortage on police officers, but I do want to, you know, bring to the attention of those officers that are just sitting in the cemeteries. Those officers that are not within the wherewithal to know what time the school hours are so they can be positioned in different areas. I've seen officers absolutely doing nothing. And I don't want to dime anybody out, I don't want to call anybody out, but we can't keep using the fact that we don't have enough officers when they're not utilizing their time properly, from my opinion.
And you are entitled to your opinion.
Uh huh.
As far as the trucks on Flower Street, I come that way to work every day. And those trucks are not, a lot of the trucks you see down there now are working on the bridge itself. I come by there every day just to make sure that those trucks are not parked there every day, so I can see it. The only vehicle that has been there consistently is the, it's a.
A camper?
Camper. And I think the individual is homeless. And quite frankly, he doesn't bother anybody, he or she. They don't trash the place or anything. I just believe that they're, my understanding is that they're homeless. Those vehicles are not there all the time, and I make sure of that because I come by there.
No, I understand that, but I live down the street. And I come, I come out of that block every day, and there's trucks on both sides every day. So I don't know if they evaporate, but they're there. And the problem is, they're tearing up our roads. They are leaving trash because a lady came and spoke before about this same incident. I've seen Chester Housing Authority clean up that whole stretch of land. I don't know who that land belongs to or if they're responsible for it, but I've seen them clean up a whole stretch of land of trash right there. I feel as though if we allow people to just come and pull up shopping to our city, anything can come. And if there is an individual that's living in that camper, he's homeless, I feel for our community as well because we don't know what his background is. So I feel like these issues are very important, and it's sort of quality of our living and also the safety of our community. So I think something needs to be done because even if you go there and the trucks aren't there, when I'm coming out, they're there.
Well, my commissioner is present. We will also, we'll continuously send a detail pass there. If those folks are there, we now have a place where it's right behind DeShawn Park. Used to be the limo, the limousine, luxury limousine. There is a, and we can talk to those individuals and direct them to that area where he is now offering up his lot for those trucks to park. And if they need to park and/or get some rest. So, but we'll make sure we monitor that.
And can you speak to the interview process?
The interview process, the interview process is basically done with, we have our very own Chief of Staff that is part of those interviews. We have HR, our HR department that is part of those interviews. And sometimes members of council are part of those interviews. And someone from the receivers team is part of those interviews. They call the individual in. They, the individual has to have their resume presented to both, to the team, I'll say, to the team. They're asked a series of questions pertaining to the job that they're applying for. We try to make sure to get as many persons as we can. I always push and plead for Chester residents to get involved in those interviews, to be a part of those interviews, to apply for those positions. The team will come up with the best candidate, they believe who is the best candidate, and then they'll present them to council.
And lastly, no one addressed the question that I asked during a public comment when it came to the expenditure list. Are those bills that's on that list paid out already, or are they bills that need to be paid? Because there were several bills on there that looked like they were from January and February, and we're about to go into April. So if you can just explain to the, you know, public, are those bills paid when the list is publicized? Or are those bills still waiting to be paid?
Some of them can be waiting to be paid, and some of them are paid. If you, and I don't have it, I have to look at it, you mentioned some prior months. It possibly, if you see something in there that said, you said January and February.
It was legal fees.
Oh, so that's when the service or the work happened? That's just the data, that's the description of the invoice, that's not when it was paid?
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shelton.
First of all, I just want to add, to the Easter Bunny, I not only I'm not, I'm not in program. I can't hear you. Oh, I'm sorry, you can hear me now.
Can you pull the mic down some?
You can hear me now. Just want you to know that that program with the Easter Bunny and other things in the city is the Enter Greek Council also is a part of those projects. The Easter Bunny, Halloween, the dinner at the Thanksgiving dinner. But anyway, money is well used, it's not for just one little thing. Okay, but my question. Now I'm here today to ask, you mentioned a Stephanie of Human Resources, you're gonna hire. Did you say how much money that person is making?
The resolution does not say that, no.
Okay, so is that new funds? Is that a new position? I mean, is this person new to the job?
Yes.
Okay, and at some point, can you, maybe not right now, maybe next month, let me know what their salary is?
I'll tell you what the process is.
Okay, that's good enough. All right, because my concern is that we're supposed to be bankrupt, and we keep hiring. And it's just like the eighty, oh, and that person that we just hired or been sent a letter, a letter for her to accept, is that still at eighty thousand? The one that you voted down last month, and this month you send a letter for her to accept or reject?
From my knowledge, it is, but we can, I'll talk to you. You can do a right to know, and we can provide that information.
Okay.
I do not believe any of that information has changed.
All right, well, we'll do right to know. But, and we still bankrupt. We kind of, well, I don't know, something doesn't sound just right. But I tell you what I do want to know, and I'm not going to be long. I want to know why some people have the expenditure list in detail, and we all don't have it. I certainly would like to have that same copy because then that would give me a better understanding why Councilman Roots seems to always vote no. And it may be that reason he was not familiar with what was on that expenditure list in detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Mr. Shelton? You did it all? Got you. Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Ms. Smith?
I think it's still morning. Okay, just for clarification, on your item number 12, you approved a property review policy, and you indicated where the persons will be coming from to be a part of that board. One of the positions you stated was assistant city solicitor. Now, I don't recall in my previous agendas that you hired an assistant city solicitor. So what, who will have to take that spot? Hopefully not the solicitor to give them added stuff to do. But is there movement in order to take, to get a assistant city solicitor?
Yeah, first of all, most likely I will accept that role in the absence of a city solicitor. The city and the receiver have been kind enough to allow us to advertise for the city solicitor and assistant paralegal. No one has applied. So we haven't, it's been about a month or two, so we're probably going to have to figure out another source of advertising. There's been no interest.
Okay, for that particular position, what you're saying?
We've advertised, I think the ads have run. We probably have to advertise in what's known as the Philadelphia Legal Intelligentsia, which is a publication for the legal community. But honestly, the salary is not enticing, and it's a considerable amount of work. And for whatever reason, there just hasn't been any interest.
Okay, since you mentioned it, is the salary listed?
I believe it is. I can't remember off the top of my head, perhaps Mr. Lightner, do you? No, no, I think it was like, was it fifty-eight or sixty? Somewhere in that range.
Okay, sixty-nine.
I would tell you this too, there's, I mean, honestly, there's not a lot of municipal solicitors, period, let alone assistants. And anyone at that range would probably have zero experience.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Cronin, Cronin?
First off, primary elections are May 16th, and I would hope whoever's listening to this would vote out.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
This is not an election bureau. This is not a platform for you to make an election statement. If there's something on the agenda, or if there's something in the community that you would like to address, with this election stuff, this is not the place.
Okay. See, as far as Morgan Williams and Kirkland are concerned, they vote consistently. I want to say what I think about your work here.
Sir, sir, please have a seat.
Why? You, wait a minute.
Please have a seat. Please have a seat. Please have a seat. Please have a.
Awful.
Please have a seat.
Let me list the ways.
Thank you very much, have a great day. God bless you. Mr., Ms. Lilton?
Morning, afternoon, Need a Little Ten? So just for clarification, is talking about election stuff not prohibited? Is that against the law in council meetings? Just wanted for the.
If, talking about candidates and election stuff, yeah, that's prohibited.
Okay, just one, okay, great, thank you. Okay, thank you, Solicitor, for explaining your responsibilities. That actually led right into a question that I have to ask to all of council about, almost have fifteen today, Mrs. Shelton, but I'm joking, questions, anyway. What? And I did want to clarify something first, if I can, for the record. Mayor and Councilman Morgan, on the, at the last evening meeting, I was talking about positions, and in particular, an IT position that I felt, because that is my area of expertise in corporate, was that that position was lower paid. And you guys had kind of insinuated that I was stating generally that all city employers were overworked and underpaid. I just want to say for the record, that is not what I was insinuating, that may be the case, but that is not what I was insinuating there, I was speaking specifically to that position. So just wanted to make sure that that was corrected for the record publicly. But as far as the positions here as council, you know, can you explain, is the council, elected council positions, is that a full-time position? And what are some of the legal ramifications around that according to either local law, state law, federal law? And this is actually, you know, Ms. Olivia asks a lot about Mr. Roots being here and having a part, a full-time job outside of council. Is it against the law to have a full-time job outside of your elected or run a different business? And again, you know, if not, and if that is happening, can we say maybe that attributes somewhat to, you know, the divided time you have for the responsibility here at the city? So what actually, is it a full-time position as an elected official? Are elected officials legally able to have outside full-time employment, businesses, et cetera, et cetera? That's one of my questions. And the other one is the city engineer? Do we only have one engineer in the city? Just, okay, so, because we have a lot of issues going on, and it would seem like we would need also another city engineer, which is going to lead me into a question that I've been bringing before this council for many years. And we've been stated many times that this issue is being worked on. And these are the blighted, unsafe properties that sit located what I want to consider one of the most important institutes here, not only in the nation but in Chester City, which is our educational facility. I've even taken the initiative to go to the school board and to address my concerns about the image of what we are allowing our young people to see. And I've addressed to the engineer, we have sent, myself and other concerned residents have sent pictures. We did everything that we were told to do. And I want to know why, as of today, are those properties still sitting there? And I know that the city knows how to deal with properties, you know. Last May, during an election time, there was a fire right next to my house, went over town, and those issues were dealt with immediately. And so I wonder, what is the holdup on these properties that is a representation, a statement to these students? And are we going to finally get to either tearing these facilities down? They're unsafe, people are there, stashing stuff there. And I just want to let you know for the record, for the students who I am also representing on this issue and other community members, they are prepared, you know, they said they've waited long enough for a response. They're prepared to go stand in front of those buildings and really just express their disgust in that those buildings are still there, bring some kind of public attention, hoping to move this council's actions to deal with that. Because that says a lot, you know, especially around our schools. We want the schools to be safe. We say we care about our children. And again, there's people that are in those buildings, possibly hiding stuff out. I've seen people go in there, it's unsafe for anybody to be in those buildings across the street. So we've addressed that many times with this council and hoping that we're going to finally get a resolution that this council can move as quickly as they did with the properties again that took, you know, that took place, the fires that took place last time. I'm going to stop there, I had a couple of other questions, but if you guys can address those, especially about the responsibility of the council legally, you know, and, you know, and just really, you know, I just wondered how much that does correlate with people's responsibility, the time that they can give. I'm just thinking, we have so much to do here in the city, you know, as you guys are saying that, it's going to require people's full-time attention on every level to deal with the issues in the city, you know. And so could that possibly be an issue outside jobs or outside businesses? That can be, you know, directly affecting the responsibilities here in the city of Chester.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Lilton. To your first question. To your first question concerning outside employment, uh, I think that our third-class city code addresses mayor and council as part-time, however, however, um, and that council can speak for themselves. I consider it's a full-time job. Spend a lot of time, not just in the office, but throughout the city. A lot of time meeting with community residents, encouraging businesses to come to the community and so forth. Are council allowed to have other employment? Yes. Yes, they are.
Okay, so Mr. Roots has not been at order with having his job outside of the city?
I never said he was.
I'm, because I know that it's been brought up, but none of the council spoke to the fact that he was legally able to have a job, you know, I'm just saying, I'll let you bring it up.
The demolition of the property across from the high school that has been there since, phew, forever. Those properties have been in that condition. Some of it has to do with, uh, bank ownership, some of it has to do with, uh, the availability of money to demolish the buildings, because it does cost a lot of money to bring those buildings down. Mister, Mister Galante is, is present with us here, our engineer, our own engineer.
Which had promised that we were going to move and get those buildings taken down. Again, what does it take? We're talking about children.
Ms. Ms. Lilton?
I'm, I'm just trying to.
I know.
Trying to follow up.
We're going to follow, we're going to answer your questions because, you know.
Okay, what I'm saying is I've addressed this, well, the young people in the community will go out and they'll make that demonstration. So for the record, is, are your positions part-time or full-time? Regardless of what you think, according to the record, are you guys considered part-time or full-time employees?
I think I just answered that question.
So part-time, I'm just, because you just said you were, you, you consider it full-time. I'm just trying to get a clarification for myself and the public.
Ms. Lilton.
Mister Mayor, I think it's important that when you're, state, bringing statements across here, we have to have a clarity, sir.
I don't know how much clearer I can be, I just answered your question.
But you said that you say that they're part-time, so according, a full-time?
I'll let the council.
No, I'm talking to all of you, um, it's not, is, is, is this a full-time position? And is it a full-time salary or a part-time position is what I'm simply asking, sir?
For me, it's a full, full-time position.
So on the records for Chester chart, on the charter of Chester, it's a full, it's a full-time position?
Legally speaking, they are part-time positions.
Thank you, sir.
Practically speaking.
I think I said that at the very beginning.
You just said, I'm, I'm still confused, maybe I'm just the only one being confused. I'm trying to say what's on the books. If I'm, if, 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 as what is on the books of the Chester chart, is this a part-time position or a full-time?
There's nothing on the books which says it's a full-time position. They are part-time positions under the third-class city code, they are permitted to have outside employment. Practically speaking, it becomes a full-time job.
Okay, but for the record, it's a part-time position with a part-time salary?
Whatever part-time means. Whatever part-time means, yes.
Okay, so the city, I mean, this seems strange, every business has a clarity of what something is. So why are we in a gray area when it comes to city government?
We are not.
It's either it is or it's not.
Compared to ninety percent of other municipality, we are not in a gray area. Ninety percent of all other municipalities are part-time.
Okay, I'm just asking for clarity, I mean, I hope that we have an opportunity to ask these questions, isn't this what this forum is for? And I'm just asking for what is and not, what your opinion is or what you think.
You asked the same question.
But you still, you didn't give me a full, but you, thank you, you clarified it.
Thank you.
For part-time, okay.
I just want to state too that we've taken great measures, Mayor, Council, Mr. Leonard, to buttress all these departments with full-time professional employees, CFO, HR, head of licensing inspections, these are the folks that will do a lot of the day-to-day work for the part-time council person who may not be full, full-time.
That's all, thanks for information, thank you guys very much, okay? Thank you for doing what you're elected to do, I appreciate it.
Ms. Ross?
Um, hello, um, I reside on West Mall Street. I just wanted, from the last night, like, meeting we had, um, because I went and I talked to each resident on that street, I, and Mayor said he did a letter. I just want to know if we could get that letter that you sent out? Or will you send it out? Or did you send it to the residents? Or who did you send it to?
Before you leave here, I'll make sure you have that letter in your hand.
Okay.
To the president of the council of Upland, bro.
Upland, okay, great, yeah, because I, I really want to have that letter and so do the other residents of that street. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman? Williams?
When the question comes out about part-time, part-time working, twenty-four-seven, okay? Yes, we, we, we don't, we don't pitch a time clock. I could be sitting, I could be.
Oh, no, 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 please, please.
I have my rights.
It's the councilwoman, please, please, Ms. Lilton, please. The council's turn.
It's part-time, but it's not part-time. If somebody sees me in the mall, eating at six o'clock or seven o'clock, and they want something done, they're going to come over there and say, "Council lady, I know you out here to eat, but I need this question answered." So what, you, it's not. I answered your question, it's part-time, but it's not part-time. It's not, it's not part-time, I just want you to know that, it's twenty-four, twenty-four-seven. Saturday, Sunday, whatever day of the week.
Ms. Lilton, Ms. Lilton, it is the council's time to address the citizen. Please, I'm asking you, please remain silent. Councilwoman?
Mister Daniels, thank you so very much. Thank you for all you do for my children here in the city of Chester. Thank you.
Good. Councilman Roots? Good afternoon. I'm going to be a minute. Most of it's going to focus on just process and procedures. For those who don't know, on the website, chestercity.com, there's little boxes all the way at the bottom or on the side, whatever device you're using. To Ms. Shelton's, uh, point, where, where are all these people seeing the expenditure reports all of a sudden? Uh, it just seems like maybe three or four weeks ago, all of a sudden, all the packages, just as we receive here with the agenda, the resolutions and the expenditure report, have appeared on the city's website. So the word's getting around that, you know, anybody in the public can see the, the full package that we have up here. So they have to be posted, uh, how many days in advance or on the website right after delivery?
Twenty-four hours in advance.
Twenty-four hours in advance. So that's, that's where you can see it, if you, you know, can get on the internet. No, no. And, and that is an issue, you, you would probably have to print it out to, to read it full, full-size. So that's why we're getting a lot of questions, people.
Mister Shelton, Mister Shelton, I hate you.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's there, it's there. And for a guy who used to do the community journalism thing, I used to always want to get those packages to kind of fill out my stories and it was never there. So this is the first I've seen it, I don't know who made the decision, but I think it, it, it's a good decision. Um, number two, the interview process, that question has come up a few times. Mayor, you said something earlier today and then kind of, I won't say changed your mind, but there, the question, the real question is what is the interview process here? So, I mean, you had stated something, but I know you didn't mean it. You said, "We should know all the people, we should interview all the people that's, that's coming through here." I think the more correct statement is, at a certain level of employee, there probably should be mayor or council, uh, involved in those interviews. So I was accused of not being in the interview for this Ms. Richards. It was kind of to the point that there, I haven't seen a policy or procedure that required me to be there. The fact that she came into the building and, and met with you, Mayor, is, is great. I wish, at least I knew she was coming in, I would have loved to have met her too. I did have the opportunity to interview her, but with HR, the head of the department and someone represented from the receivers team to do the interview, to make the selection, I thought the process was proper and, and complete. So going forward, I think we need to decide when exactly someone representing the mayor and council, you know, should be on that interview. And it should happen probably at a certain level of employee, because we've hired, since I've been here, a lot of people, uh, in city government that none of us were involved in the interview process. Number four, public comment is public comment. You know, the gentleman who came up here, he has three minutes like everyone else, I would think he has the, the, the right to free speech. I think we need to determine for sure what is, uh, allowed and what's not allowed to be spoken, so we don't have people coming up here making statements knowing ahead of time that they shouldn't be making them. Air Park. So last year, you guys might know that I was director of Parks and Recreation. There was, uh, tree planting in Air Park, and while there, a young, not a young man, but a gentleman came to me, looked at the Air Park building, which is the first tee, the golf building, and asked, you know, what, what goes on in that building? And I told him, real nothing, it's just a place where we store junk, the building is, has no use, you know, here in the city. And he says, "Wow, that would be a great place for me to headquarter my operations for the community. Environmental, Ninth Street Community Youth, Environmental Health Youth Corps." What that group is, is, uh, this man just teaches young kids how to plant trees, flowers, it's an environmental learning situation. He says, "Uh, I'll clean it out, I'll fix it up if I can use it as my headquarters, it would be a great place." I called his bluff, I said, "Go ahead, here's the key." And, uh, he really shocked me, he really, from September to October, he really cleaned that place up to the extent that he could. It had been abandoned for a really long time, a lot of vandalism. He patched here, he fixed plumbing there, put the toilet back in, got help from Del Cora, Chester Water Authority to figure some of the things out. And he start having programs in there, one of the most important ones was With Children, sponsored by WSFS, where for twelve sessions, the kids were going to come there and learn all about financial literacy. I asked them to give me a list of all the programs that has taken place in that building since October, and there were over twenty-one of them, and there are several more. The other place that uses that facility is our Chester Shade Tree Commission, so all throughout, you know, the time I've been here, I've approved every tree planting that has come my way. Pretty simple thing to say yes to. In order to get the trees to Chester, they're usually picked up on Friday and they needed a place to be stored. So that facility, again, became a storage place overnight for these trees, they pull them out on Saturday and plant them. Unfortunately, you know, amongst mayor and council, sometimes because we are in our silos and our own departments, some would say our fiefdoms, we don't always communicate everything that each department does with each other. And I think this is a perfect case of that. Last week, the gentleman who, well, one of the things, the gentleman's organization is so successful that he continues to get grants. So it was late in twenty-twenty-two, he got a grant and says, "I want to do more work on the building," and I just had to stop him. I was like, "You don't own this building, this isn't your building, uh, you've done a great job, but we have to find some way to see if mayor and council would be willing to transfer this building, uh, to you by lease or ownership." And I got to go back to this gentleman right here, my solicitor, he says, "I'd be happy to draw up a lease." To my surprise, I'm, I, you know, come January third, I was no longer in, in Parks and Rec, I was in another department. So that kind of went on hold, but he didn't go on hold, he continued to have the programs, continued to fix up the building to, to a small degree. Uh, we had the building assessed by sort of a building person who knows what it would take to bring the building up to code, it's approximately fifty to eighty thousand dollars. Del Cora has said, you know, "We would love to pitch in on that." But again, it's not, it's, it's our building, it's the city building, none of this could move forward. Uh, Chief Lightner was made aware of what the situation was, and that really is the genesis of the resolution you heard today for the, what do we call it? The property review policy, where we're putting a committee together who will assess some of the properties that the city owns to see if there's better use for these properties. So if you, as a citizen, see a building, see a plot of land that you know is city-owned, you know, you can come to us or come to that committee and say, "I'd like to buy that or lease that and put it in use." We have a few abandoned buildings around town, you know, the building in Air Park was formerly abandoned. There's, uh, some facilities that we're doing recreation in that would probably be condemned if a inspector went in there, but we're still, you know, having programming in there. For those of you who live in Sun Village, you know, that facility that's used for voting is on, only open two times a year, primarily because you don't want anybody in there any other time. It's just years of deferred maintenance, the city not having money or, or, or the vision to get these things done, thank God, ARPA dollars are coming through and we're starting to address those issues. I just say all this to say that, that something happened sometime last week where the gentleman called me and says, "The locks were changed, I can't get in the building and it's causing a real problem because I've got a program, you know, the kids are coming for their eleventh session with WSFS." And the ramifications of just that, 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 the, the locks being changed really put Chester in a bad light. WSFS has partners and word got around that, you know, the building wasn't available. I wasn't made aware that the locks were changed, I had keys, I could have easily taken anybody in there to see whatever they wanted to see. Uh, I, I really don't know what the status is now, but I'm really happy that we passed this resolution today, mayor and council, so that we can sit down and use this building as our first test case as to how we can turn this building into something that can be continually used for the community. And you're going to see a bunch of documentation from a bunch of organizations who want to buy into turning an abandoned building in Chester into an environmental center that serves kids, teaches kids, uh, those very skills. So I'm really looking forward to, to doing that. It, it's unfortunate, you know, our reputation is already bad and just because of lack of communication, it, it got terribly worse, uh, over the weekend. And, uh, we're going to have to correct that very quickly. I've got a couple announcements, the Women's Health Forum, we talked about that earlier, I know that Ms. Rosetta Carter is probably in our community room or computer lab room right now, giving booster shots and shingle shots, well, she's not doing it, but she's coordinating that. But that Women's Health Forum was really fabulous, it's one of the best events I've ever been to, period. Hey, Mayor, I saw you up there, you were, uh, participating fully from your seat. There were probably five guys in the room, it was truly a women's forum, they had phenomenal speakers, uh, that participated. And it only made me wonder, what would a men's health forum look like? It certainly wouldn't look like that, because that was perfectly geared for women, but we're going to put some hits together and see if we can do a men's forum, uh, sometime in the near future. I think that would be exciting. And this Saturday, there's going to be a lot of cleanups going on around town. CRC, I don't know what the whole thing means, but I know it has something to do with Crum Creek, Ridley Creek and Chester Creek. A couple of times a year, this Saturday being one of them, nine o'clock in the morning, there's going to be at least three locations in Chester where you can just, if you haven't already registered, you can still join, roll up your sleeves, put on some gloves, get your, get your dungarees on, and it's all near the water or in the water type cleanup. So I know right on Fifth and, let's say, Edgemont, the creek that might go down to Ethel Waters Park up into Air Park, that's going to be one area. There's going to be a couple of areas down on Chester waterfront, Delaware River waterfront. And I know Upland, I guess you'd call that Upland, Incinerator Road, so the water that goes. So the water that goes past there are gonna be three locations. So for those of you who want to participate in a huge cleanup where it's not just Chester, but people all are part of the CRC, uh, will come in and, and, uh, take part in that. And it, although it's not on the street level, uh, it's, it's amazing how so much of this trash goes down into the dykes and into the water, and the things that they bring out is pretty phenomenal. That's it. Thanks. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman?
Um, I'll be quick. Real estate taxes. I know I'm gonna keep harping on it. Um, please pay your real estate taxes. Uh, you can pay online at ChesterCity.com. Uh, if you did not pay your twenty-twenty-two taxes, it is now delinquent, past due. Um, you can reach out to E Collect, uh, to make that payment. Uh, all of their information is on our website. Uh, you have up until April thirtieth to pay, uh, with a two percent discount of your base rate for your real estate taxes. Uh, thereafter, it'll be the base rate up until, I wanna say it's June, June thirtieth. June thirtieth, uh, then after June thirtieth, there's a penalty, and you'll be able to pay until February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. But don't wait. Take it, take advantage of the two percent. I like what I see. I like what I see back there. I see the paperwork. That's right. We'll, we'll guide you right downstairs. Um, so ma- please, please, please make sure you pay your taxes. Go online. You can, you know, pay via your debit or credit card or your bank account information on our secure site, um, uh, via online. But if you want to come in person, um, our hours are nine to four-thirty. Uh, you can go downstairs in the front lobby and, and, uh, and pay your taxes for twenty-twenty-three only. We're only accepting twenty-twenty-three. Again, if you are past due for twenty-twenty-two or prior years, you have to either go, uh, pay at E Collect and/or Delaware County. Uh, additional, more information to come. Uh, there's a, we're gonna be doing an autism walk for autism awareness here in the city of Chester. Uh, I was very shocked and to know that here in the city, well, or in Delaware County, there wasn't, there hasn't been any awareness surrounding autism. So I'm really grateful and honored to work with the Health Department and so many others within the community to put on, uh, the city of Chester's first big, uh, autism awareness walk. It'll be done on April twenty-ninth, which is a Saturday from ten AM to one PM, uh, at Subaru Park around the Philadelphia Union. So it'll be a, a three K-ish type of a walk and or run. Um, and we'll be also be providing some giveaways and, uh, educational information and resources, not just to those families who are dealing with individuals that has autism, but for anybody who, who may want to come out and speak to someone, uh, that, uh, may be having their own, uh, separate health problems or need, uh, some therapy or con- consultation as well. So again, it's April twenty-ninth. We do have flyers that has been posted on our website. If you and or your family, or you know of someone who has autism or just want to walk for someone, uh, we are recommending that you put a team together, uh, so that everybody can represent, uh, sponsor, or showcase an individual that they're supporting. Uh, there's a registration or QR code on the website, uh, and on our flyer, uh, where we are recommending or requiring more so for everyone to register. Uh, so again, it's April twenty-ninth, ten AM. Uh, please go on our website to register. And last but not least, job postings. I think we have roughly about maybe six or seven vacancies that we posted on our website. Uh, go to the website, there's a tab called Jobs. You'll see the vacant jobs that we have posted and listed there. I think there was a comment earlier that we should be hiring or local people, uh, for the jobs. We a hundred percent, hundred and fifty percent try to hire local people for the job opportunities that we have here in the city of Chester. That's where we look first. And if you notice, most of our jobs, no, well, all of our jobs are only posted on our website, uh, and on our social media platform. So again, there's quite a bit, or about six or seven positions available, uh, here at the city of Chester. So I encourage you and or someone who you know that is seeking some, uh, opportunities here with the city of Chester to please go on there and apply. And just my last comment, uh, some others have already said it, but that Women's Health Conference was most certainly uh, one that a lot of us should not have missed, and I'm glad that I was there to be, to take part of it. Um, they did a great job putting that together. Ms. Rosetta Carter, Ms. Diana King, and all of the speakers, and, and even Ms. Ice, Ice and Nichols as well. So I agree with you, Councilman. We up next. We gotta put together a Mid Health Conference, so we found a way how we get that together. But, uh, with that, are you?
Thank you, Councilman. Thank God. Um, let me just make a few quick, one announcement. Starting Monday, um, Mr. Alexander, Mr. Robinson, and their, their team of individuals, along with myself, Councilman Wes is, is under the weather right now, and others, uh, we're gonna start our citywide cleanup, starting this Monday. Um, just recently, these guys have worked their tails off, going behind people, cleaning up time and time and time again. And so we have put together, we've, I've worked with them, we've been working together to put together our citywide cleanup that will run from Monday through Friday, and that will start this Monday. Um, statement was, Councilman, you thought my statement was incorrect, but it was correct. We should interview. Council should be in the interview process. And this is why I'm gonna be in every interview when a police officer comes through this city, or a person that wants to be a police officer comes to this city. Why is that? As mayor, I'm over with the Police Department, and if something goes wrong, the first person they point to is me. And so I have an obligation to make sure that I'm sitting in the room, looking at individual who wants to be a law enforcement personnel here in this city, straightening the eye, and having an intelligent conversation with that person, and asking questions, "Why do you want to be a police officer here in the city of Chester? What are your qualifications?" And so on and so forth. So I think, especially if we're department heads, that we have an obligation to be in those interviews. So we can make sure, so we can look at that person or those individuals and see, see who they really are, be in that room to have those conversations. And so, and I'm gonna continue to do that because I think that's important. And I, not just for police, but any interview that is made available to me, and I have the time to, Mr. Lightner and I have talked about this, and I have the time and energy to spend in that interview, I will be a part of the interview because I want to be able to look at those persons. There are some persons here in the City Hall today that we don't know, that we actually don't know. And if you have persons within the body, you should know, you should have, know the face if you don't even know the name. Um, free speech. Free speech is one thing, and everybody has a right to that. You do not have the right to insult me or any member of council, nor do we have the right to insult you in this, in this room. Not really at any time. I will not. I have a title. I have a name. If it's not Mister, it's Mayor. If it's not councilperson, it's Mister. We have titles and we have names. I will not be insulted by anyone calling me out of my name or by some other name. I don't do it to them, I won't allow them to do it to me. Or I won't even allow them to do it to anybody on this council. Part, another part. Reputation would have gotten worse. Reputation would have gotten worse if someone would have been injured in that, in that building. There's a program in that building, and we don't have insurance. There's a program in that building, and the person does not have state police clearance. We can't have young people, we can't have persons working in here without state police clearance. And if you're, if we're just gonna open up a building and let somebody go in and operate because they have a, they say they have a good program that was not presented to mayor and council, that's just not acceptable. That building has no windows. I was in there. I changed the locks. And I changed the locks for fear of something going wrong. No windows, can't see in, can't see out. The bathroom is a mess. The piping is a mess. The insulation, you could see it. It was not a safe place for young people. And once again, I, I didn't see any windows that I could, that somebody can look in or look out. You don't put children in that type of position, and you don't put the city in that type of position to be sued. So the reputation would have gotten much, much worse had something gone wrong in that building. So I took it upon myself to change the locks. I gave the keys to Mr. Lightner, and I explained to him, and he agreed. The bankruptcy. The bankruptcy. Number one, and it's been stated by the receiver as well, I did not call for bankruptcy. To be clear. And the reason I did not call for bankruptcy is the, is because of the way it was handled before it was called upon. We had a meeting in this building. The meeting consisted of retired police officers, firefighters, and former employees. Also, officers who are all still on the job, and firefighters who are still on the job, and employees. And members of, of this council were at that meeting as well. The receiver and his chief of staff, Mr. V. Jacobo, told that entire room that was filled and packed, TV, TV cameras was in that room. He said, "We're just trying to give y'all some information. We're not here yet. We're not there yet. We're not at that point of bankruptcy yet. We just want to give you some heads up and some information." He said it time and time again. "We're not there yet. We just wanted to give you a heads up of the possibilities." That's what he said. Less than twenty-four hours later, less than twenty-four hours, the receiver and Mr. Kapoor declared that they were going to go into bankruptcy. After making that statement, to not just me sitting there, members of council were sitting there, and the community, and those retirees. That was a lie. And I was not going to sit there and be a part of that lie. So that's why I did what I did. That's why I did what I did, young lady. That's why I did what I did, young lady. I don't deal with the lies. I don't deal with the lies. So therefore, therefore, if you choose to accept that, that's you. That's you. But I was in the room, and I heard what he said, what both of them said. That was very deceitful on their part. Thank you. Have a great day. This meeting is now adjourned.